Greetings everyone, and welcome to Discussions, Volume 3 Series. This is the first video of Discussions, Volume 3, and the reason why I say Volume 3 is because it happens to be February. Every month we do a new series. Of course, we did the first series in, the Volume 1 series was December, January. Now it's February, February 5th, 2011, correct? Saturday, February 5th, 2011. I am your host, James Piranha Madonna. I am here with my mentor and co-host for Discussions, the Reverend Dr. William J. Isomond. How are you today, sir?
Fine, excellent.
Okay, now, I try to wear a different scarf with every show, to be, you know, show a little class here. I got my Switzer's Scottish tartan plaid.
Aye, aye!
Aye, we're losing powder, Captain! Oh, I just want to say, a slightly, slightly belated happy birthday to the Reverend Dr. William J. Isomond!
Oh, no!
What was it, yesterday?
Please, do not even remind me of that!
Was it yesterday?
It was yesterday, oh my god!
February 4th, the Aquarian here. You know that my late great uncle Frank, who was a ballroom dancer, had told me, he was an Aquarian also, but he was a little, not very modest. He used to, yeah, he used to teach ballroom dancing for Fred Kelly, Gene Kelly's brother.
Fred's mother, oh yeah.
Gene Kelly's brother, Fred Kelly Studios, and he told me that there are more Aquarians, overall, in the Hall of Fame than any other astrological sign.
Because Aquarians are, you know, supposed to be artistic.
They are very artistic.
So that's why they, I don't think, well, I guess he was. Ronald Reagan was an Aquarian too, but he was an actor.
But they're very disheveled in their personal life. All the Aquarians I know have newspapers and magazines and, God knows what, all over the friggin' place, tables.
Because they constantly incorporate things around them. They are, they are forever in school.
See, I like to file absolutely everything and keep everything...
They file it in their brain.
I like to keep my dwelling like, like, like an apartment or a home that comes out of, what is it, Home and Garden magazine? I like everything fastidiously spotless. I'm a neat freak, and I don't like germs, and I don't like to get dirty. Hail Felix Unger, may he rest in peace! Tony Randall. Ha, clown! What, how was it? Ha, clown! Oscar, 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 what a tangled web we weave, remember that? That was a great show. The old comedies, the old sitcoms were the best. You don't get that anymore. Now you get a bunch of stupid crap. Very metrosexual or very gay oriented sitcoms coming out of Hollywood, and they have, the laugh track is more obnoxious than ever. They laugh at every little thing, and most of it's not funny.
There's gonna be a show on.
Yeah.
WLIW Channel 21, in this area, PBS, about all the old comedies, with Laurel and Hardy and The Three Stooges and Charlie Chaplin and...
Really?
Carol Burnett, Lucy.
What about The Honeymooners? The Honeymooners are totally ad-libbed, Jackie Gleason like we are, and from what I understand, they lost in the ratings to I Love Lucy, and that's how they, that's how the show ended, but The Honeymooners became really super popular and legendary, in syndication when, with the reruns.
Like Star Trek.
Same thing happened with Gene Roddenberry's Star Trek, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay, The American Eagle. This is an exact replica of a Victorian walking stick, alright? The eagle beak, which I would love to bash over the heads of all conservatives. Speaking of conservatives, I hear that Bill O'Reilly is interviewing Barack Obama before the Super Bowl? Now what is that all about?
Oh man.
Now, I hope, I hope Baracko, President Barack Obama does not fold like a cheap camera.
He's already folded, many times.
Yeah, with bipartisanship, compromise with the conservatives.
With putting into positions all the business people and corporate ass kissers in positions of power within agencies that they actually pollute and etc., and then go into agencies that are gonna control that? Come on!
Yeah, like the ex, the former CEO of General Electric?
Yeah.
He, Obama, hold on. Speaking of bashing this friggin' eagle beak, I hate this fucking machine.
Hey, I just got it!
Yeah, I know. It's supposed to be high-tech and new, why does it have to be so fucking noisy? Anyway, you know, you know one of my friends, well, anyway, I don't wanna get into it. Anyway, I would like to call this, besides Discussions, the first of Volume 3, which the Reverend Dr. William J. Isomond will read, very applicable, very important newspaper articles from our local newspaper here.
Or anywhere.
In northeastern New Jersey, the Bergen County Record, even though they, they are a tad bit also corporate ass kissing, because they don't wanna make waves and tell the real hard-hitting truth, okay? Like us and possibly the producer, Mr. Braverman of Conspiracy Theory with Jesse Ventura, you know, people that, and Alex Jones, people that have the balls to tell the real hard-hitting truth. But I wanna call this show, America's Town Hall Meeting of Truth. Now, why do I say Town Hall Meeting? Well, here in the Garden State of New Jersey, our bloated, mean-spirited, stingy conservative governor, Chris, Crisco Christie, has a little thing that he enjoys doing. He travels all around the state of New Jersey with his town hall meetings so he can get feedback, for whatever reason. I don't know why he cares about the feedback, because the man does what he wants to do anyway. But he, he wants to get feedback from the citizens. And of course, you know, if you disagree, it's like Harold Camping, if you disagree with him, he probably cuts you off very rudely, you know, and, and has, he goes on with his conservative rhetoric. But anyway, this is a town hall meeting of truth. We pull no punches. And I wanna start off by saying, let me put the eagle, the American eagle down for a second, even though I like using it and swinging it as a prop, possibly a weapon. Burger King has been running this commercial now. It's called the Steak House, the stuffed Steak House Burger, and what it is, is, I'll tell you why I mentioned this. It's a hamburger with the cheese and the peppers and God knows what other filler stuffed into the hamburger, instead of having the burger and the veggies or the cheese and everything going on top. And why am I bringing this up? Because the commercial, of course, capitalism in America, deregulated capitalism, means you can lie to the consumer. But what they're doing is, by stuffing these items into the hamburger itself, you are getting less and less beef. And the average viewer, the average American fool, does not see the reality of this. They simply look at it and go, oh, listen to that, western, "stuffed steakhouse burger", and it sounds like a wagon train, you know, ah, like a... You know, meanwhile, they're getting less beef. It's an excuse to give you less beef, so the company saves money and increases their profits by giving you a little bit of beef, and reality is probably a lot less beef than normal. And they probably have soy filler that they don't tell you about, because it is stuffed, they're using the word stuffed, and you have cheese and peppers or whatever into the beef. More, more deception of the public, you know?
Well, it's like all the packaging. You know, less stuff in the packaging, packages look the same.
Right.
But they're of less weight or volume or whatever.
Exactly, exactly, less volume.
And the same price.
Hey, the price never goes down, even though they're giving you less of the primary ingredient. How about that? Gotta love America.
And we're in a deflation cycle. Prices are supposed to go down. There's no inflation.
That's true.
Nobody got a social security increase, a cola, because there was no inflation, yet the food prices and everything and oil are all the same.
Salaries are going down too, on average.
Salaries, please.
You know...
They've been going down for thirty years.
Isn't it, maybe it's part of the whole conspiracy plan to, to decrease the size of the surplus mainstream population and the poor? Maybe it's part of the culling of the herd perhaps?
And turning America into a third world country.
And taking the, the middle class and slowly, taking the middle class and converting them into poor. So, which means that, like, for instance, in Egypt, the, you know, the journalists who are being attacked, you know, especially the American journalists, there are, they took video photos of streets in Cairo, where donkeys are riding right next to Mercedes and BMWs, which means that there is no middle class, which means that this is the future, the near future of democracies, right? All over the world, capitalism, it's like that in Colombia, South America, there's no middle class. So by seeing donkeys, or as we say in Italian, chuchos, next to, you know, Mercedes and BMWs, you're showing two opposite classes, which represents the class war, which means the middle class are vanishing. You know, and the Egyptians, okay, don't like Americans, and I don't blame them, because I heard the United States government has been sending millions of dollars every year to the dictator, the military dictator, they're trying to get rid of Babarik, right? Is that his name?
Yeah, Babarik gets like three hundred, four hundred million dollars, personal pocket money.
Oh, really?
Plus his billion or so for his military.
Oh, we're taking, we're doing a video, but this is one of our employees. Mr. Ronnie? Ronnie? You're gonna be on, you're gonna be on worldwide internet, whether you like it or not, but step right in. No, all right, step right in. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. A little unexpected, but you know, you never know, since we don't rehearse, since we do not rehearse any of these shows, we're gonna have to take a, take a break, and then we'll pick up where we left off about what's going on in Egypt. Hold on a second. Okay, we are back, welcome everyone, and welcome to Discussions, Volume 3 Series, because it is the first of Discussions, first video of the month. It is February, it is Saturday, February 5th, 2011. I'm here with the American Eagle, because this is the first video titled, "America's Town Hall Meeting of Truth." And I am your host, James P. Madonna, of Megalike 21, the hardest-hitting internet talk radio station on the planet, and I'm here with my mentor and co-host, the Reverend Dr. William J. Isomond. I know we had a, we had an abrupt interruption by one of our employees, Mr. German gentleman, German-American, fine man, and very highly intelligent, of course, he's German, Ronnie, right?
Shit, eh!
Mr. Ronnie, anyway.
Mr. Ronald, yeah.
You see, see this, conservatives? This is what you should get.
Oh, but I had.
The eagle beak. All right, now, let me see where I left off. Camera person, everything okay? Okay. We were talking about Egypt, we're talking about the class, the big class distinction where the donkeys are riding next to Mercedes and BMWs, which means the middle class is kaput, gone, which is very similar to what's happening in all democracies all over the world, thanks to corrupt conservative career politicians who want a corporate plutocracy takeover. And then I mentioned about Egyptians not liking Americans and telling journalists right to their face, basically, and I don't blame them, because the United States government has been supporting with lots of money dictator Babarik, right? Millions of, millions of dollars per year?
Yeah.
The US government has been sending Babarik. And honestly, I don't blame them, you know? I mean, the United States does things based on the bottom line, and that's all they care about. Profits before people, so you know. Now, Whoopi Goldberg was very upset on The View, because they want to ban smoking now outdoors, I think at Central Park? Which, you know, I mean, it's kinda ridiculous. I can understand banning smoking indoors, but you're outside, you have the whole sky, an atmosphere above you. So what, what happens when the smoker blows out smoke? It goes up into the stratosphere. So I think that's a bit much, you know, that they wanna ban people from smoking outside, outdoors. I mean, how fascist is this society becoming here in the United States? But according to people, oh, first of all, I know I said this in a previous video, but if you're collecting, if you're on a fixed income, and you're collecting either supplemental security income, social security, disability, welfare, whatever, do not, and I repeat, do not get a part-time job. Do not allow conservatives and the government to make you feel guilty for being on the dole, because once you get the job, say goodbye to your check, kiss it goodbye. And in that case, a person that I interviewed, who applied for social security disability, was denied the third time, and he has a legitimate ailment, okay, that hasn't gone away. The government says, and this is somebody from the state of New Jersey, who's for some strange reason appointed by social security to make decisions, like an adjudicator, for on behalf of the claim that's pending. And this person from the state of New Jersey, possibly a Chris Christie administration employee...
Hack.
Hack, who is going to deny everybody who happens to be poor or middle class that, or lower middle class that's trying to get help from the government, okay? They'll deny everything, because they want you to drop dead, basically. Okay? This, the government, the state employee on behalf of social security says, if you can sit, stand, or walk, you can work. Which means they want you to accept the job that you were never trained for, or they might, they want you to downgrade your career and get any job. So that's pretty much it. In other words, you gotta be, you gotta be really, 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 really disabled.
Well, in the Toyota case, with Justice Roberts...
Yeah.
Supreme Court, he said to the woman who brought the case, "If you can brush your teeth, you are not disabled."
Really?
Yeah.
Uh, let me, oh, I got news for conservatives, there are no jobs out there, they're outsourced. Um, if you're on the dole, okay, now, now, I feel sorry for the US postal workers. They, they laid off a lot of people recently, and they cut, they cut the hours, and the postal workers have our...
And now they're gonna cut postal stations.
They have an insane schedule. They're delivering my mail late at night. They're delivering my mail on Sunday. They're delivering like in the middle of the night. I mean, these poor people, the government, which I'm sure the conservatives are behind this cut.
Well, the, but post office is partially privatized, that's why.
There you go. And when corporations are in control, instead of the government, instead of big government, when corporations are in control, they make you, they force you to multitask, they force you to do the job of several people, they force you to take a cut in pay, they force you to take a cut in benefits, and they eventually want to enslave you, or if they can't enslave you, they'll get some, they'll get some illegal immigration or child labor to do it. They are the greediest, miserable, they, they might be even worse than Ebenezer Scrooge. Or, you know, reminds me of the...
Or Caligula.
Caligula. Now, who's that, that movie with Laurel and Hardy?
Heidi.
The March of the Wooden Soldiers?
The March of the Wooden Soldiers.
Where the...
They play it every Christmas.
Where they, they foreclose the mortgage on Little Bo Peep?
Ah.
And despite the fact that she has so many children, he didn't, he didn't care, he wanted to throw her out in the street with her kids. That is corporate America, that, those are the banks, and...
Well, they are throwing people out there, there's like 1.4 million people whose houses are being foreclosed, through, through no fault of their own, because of the stupid, the stupid crooked shenanigans...
Uh-huh.
...that were done by the, the people on, on, on Wall Street, with the 2008 meltdown, financial meltdown. Now, if Barack Obama had a lick of sense, he would by executive order, just say that, hey, those people are fine, they're gonna live in their homes and, you know, either the bank negotiates with them to get a proper mortgage payment?
Yeah.
But they're not gonna throw them out of their houses. You know?
You know, a person, one of our knowledge gnomes interviewed this individual that needs to go bankrupt personally, bank, personal bankruptcy, and the bill collectors have a thing now, they all have one thing in common. If you tell them you don't have a job, and you have no assets, and you can't pay off the credit card, then they say, why don't you borrow the money from your friends and relatives, regardless of how astronomical, you know, the amount is? And then they make you feel guilty. Well, the bank issued you a, a...
They have to make it your fault.
A line of credit, and you're the one that used the card, so even though you're throwing in my face, like the person said, hey, I heard that everybody filing for personal bankruptcy, I heard, I hear all those people are a complete tax write-off for the banks and the credit card companies, and then, and then the person said to them, well, that's, that's irrelevant, that's besides the point. They issued you a line of credit, and you are the one that used the card, so you are irresponsible, blah, blah, blah. First of all, you do not have to ask your friends and relatives to pay off your fucking credit card. You just simply say, have a good day, sir, hang up the phone. Look, by rights, Dr. Bill, if you tell them you have no assets and no job, do you owe them any more explanation?
No, and, and hopefully...
Under the law?
Hopefully, if you are in that particular position.
Yeah.
With no assets and no income and etc., you are considered judgment-proof. So when they get their judgments, what are they gonna get? Blood from a stone?
Well, that's what the person told them, you can't squeeze blood and water out of a stone that doesn't have any blood and water in there. Now, so according to the Fair Collections Act, they do not owe them an elaborate explanation for like hours and hours of, you know, oh, poor me, oh, yes, I am irresponsible, oh, yes, I should ask my family to give me the several thousand dollars that I owe, blah, blah, blah.
What they're trying to do is get you to make some sort of commitment to them.
Right.
They, yeah, a collection agency has, the original credit card...
They're cocksuckers.
Wait, the original credit card company who issued you the card?
Yeah.
I believe it's after ninety days writes off that debt.
There you go.
They hand it over to a collection company. Collection company has your file, and they, as best they can, they want to collect money. And that's all they, they wanna do. So they will do it by hook or crook.
Now, if the bank tries to settle with, with the person and says, we'll cut your, your balance in half by fifty, and then eventually sixty percent of what you're normally owed, and the collection, the collection agency comes back and mentions the full amount, now, and you have it in writing, then doesn't that legally stand if the bank sends you a settlement?
If you wanna settle with the bank.
If you want, if you have the money to settle with the bank.
Sure.
But they all suck. Listen, free market capitalism under a conservative, all this bullshit you hear when Chris Christie goes around New Jersey with the town hall meetings...
If he's in New Jersey.
If he's in New Jersey.
He's always out of New Jersey.
He's always out of New Jersey. Listen, this whole thing about cutting taxes from the rich, creating jobs is a lie, because the jobs are outsourced anyway, and, and you know what? It never, it never created jobs for America, and they, you, look, the people, the little people, the little guy should not have to make sacrifices, Chris Christie, because they can barely survive, they're living day to day, week to week, paycheck to paycheck, or in case of social services, month to month, and there's really not much money left over after they pay their bills. It's the rich that should make the sacrifices, the fat cats.
It's not a sacrifice for a rich person.
No, because they're rich.
If you're making a million dollars and you pay out a hundred thousand dollars, what kind of sacrifice is that? You got nine hundred thousand dollars.
And trim the military, trim the military budget down, that'll help pay for...
Eight hundred billion dollars can be trimmed from the military without any problems whatsoever.
Eight hundred billion, did you hear that? Without affecting the military.
Our strength in the world.
But conservatives don't do that, and they don't tax the rich.
Boehner and his boys have got, they want a hundred billion dollars, they've already issued forth, from programs for, you know who?
The little guy.
The little guy.
The poor.
Yeah. One hundred billion, when they could just rake eight hundred billion right off the military, one, two, three.
Oh, it really breaks my heart that the rich may have to have maybe one less beach house, you know, around the world. I mean, poor thing.
Or latte.
Or, yeah, latte, one less latte. Or maybe they, they have to cut back on the Beluga caviar. It really make, oh, I really feel bad for you, you elitists, you know? A ninety-one percent tax rate from FDR and Harry Truman, we need it, we need FDR's Second Bill of Rights, and that would solve all of our woes, okay? And make the wealthy pay their fair share in taxes. Don't believe the, the bullshit and the lies, and this shows you how gullible and foolish the average American is.
Who actually votes for those people.
Who votes for conservatives that do not have their best interests at heart. That's the amazing thing about, about mainstream, middle-class, Tea Party protester Americans. They do not, the Republicans do not have their best interests at heart. Not even the Democrats who are now...
The dummycrats!
The Democrats are now dummycrats, as far as Megalike 21 and Newsletter Censored is concerned. We have Republicans and we have dummycrats, because the dummycrats have sold out you, the voter, the little guy, in favor of the corporate plutocracy. The dummycrats have become business people and corporate elitists, and, and that includes Obama, Hillary Clinton, who tried to go to Africa and push genetically-modified seeds from Monsanto onto African farmers, corporatism again. It's outrageous. The dummycrats have sold you out, which means that the two-party system is all for the corporate plutocracy, they're all for elitists. There's no more liberals, maybe some independent candidates might be liberal, but then again, they have no money to campaign, and they never get invited to the debates. There you go. Anyway, Town Hall Meeting, we pull no punches at the Megalike 21 Newsletter Censored, America's Town Hall Meeting of Truth. Continue with the first article.
An orbiting NASA telescope is finding whole new worlds of possibilities in the search for alien life.
Uh-huh.
Spotting more than fifty potential planets that appear to be in the habital zone. In just a year, peering out at this small slice of the galaxy, the Kepler telescope has discovered one thousand two hundred and thirty-five possible planets outside our solar system.
Wow!
Amazingly, fifty-four of them are in the zone that could be hospitable to life. That is not too cold and not too hot. Until now, only two planets outside our solar system were even thought to be in the Goldilocks Zone.
Goldilocks.
Fifty-four possibilities is an enormous amount, an inconceivable amount. The more than twelve hundred new found celestial bodies are not confirmed as planets yet. At least one other astronomer believes Kepler could be ninety percent accurate. After that, it's another big step in proving that a confirmed planet has some of the basic conditions needed to support life, such as the proper size, composition, temperature, and distance from its star. More advanced aspects of habitability, such as atmospheric conditions, presence of water and carbon, require telescopes that aren't built yet. Presence of water and carbon require telescopes that aren't built yet. Just because a planet is in the habital zone, doesn't mean it has life. Mars is a good example of that. Even if some of these planets are found to contain life, it may not be intelligent life. It could be bacteria or mold or some kind of life form people can't even imagine.
Well, even even that might be more intelligent than many Americans we know.
All the celestial bodies Kepler looks at are in our Milky Way galaxy.
Uh huh.
But they are so far away that traveling there is not a realistic option. In some cases, it would take many millions of years with current technology. But what Kepler is finding in distant parts of the galaxy could be applied to exploring closer stars. Our grandchildren will have to decide what is the next step. Before Wednesday, the count of confirmed planets outside our solar system stood at five hundred and nineteen. That means Kepler could triple the number. And those findings are from Kepler scanning of just one quarter of one percent of the night sky. So the actual number of planets out there is presumably hundreds of times greater. That is exciting to astronomers. Since the more planets there are, the greater the odds that life exists elsewhere in the universe.
Interesting. You know, on on the Megalite twenty-one, uh, hard-hitting internet talk radio station. We have a Hubble telescope image of the Andromeda Galaxy. The infamous Andromeda Galaxy is there. And actually, all the planets are Hubble telescope images of the real planets. They're authentic. Absolutely. Now, I just wanna mention that my American eagle, uh, walking stick, which actually shows some dignity. Is an exact replica of a Victorian walking stick. All right? And this is the eagle beak of truth, which should be plowed vigorously into the skulls. Of all conservatives, corrupt conservatives in bed with corporate CEOs. Or the tools of Satan, by the way, in the end times.
Among the oft-repeated predictions of Albert Einstein's.
It's true.
Famous theory of relativity.
Right.
Is that if a twin travels through the cosmos on a high-speed rocket. When he returns to Earth, he will be noticeably younger than the twin that stayed at home.
Too bad he didn't have a theory on combing his hair of Albert Einstein.
Now physicists have demonstrated that the same is true even if. The traveling twin is merely driving in a car about twenty miles per hour. But in that case, when the twin gets home from the grocery store, he is only a tiny fraction of a nanosecond younger.
Wow.
The reverse is often said to be true for a twin who spends time high on a mountain top. General relativity predicts that time passes more quickly at greater altitudes. Because objects don't feel the Earth's gravity quite as strongly.
Uh huh.
But the physicists found that a twin who lives just about a foot above sea level. Will age ever so slightly faster than a twin living at the beach. During your daily life, you experience relativity. This makes science resonate with regular people. In the past, the phenomenon known as time dilation. Has been proved by studying what happens to clocks strapped aboard jets streaking across the sky.
Clocks?
Clocks.
And that's no crock.
Streaking across the sky or perched on rockets miles above the earth.
Miles above the earth. I love mushrooms. I'm a fun guy. What can I say?
But the rules of relativity are always enforced, even over the smallest distance. And at the slowest speeds.
Uh huh.
The difference is that the effect is infinitimally slow.
Infant.
Dismally.
Infinitimally.
Infinitimally.
Try to say that fast a few times. Should do ventriloquism with the ziggler.
Hi, everybody. My name is Ziggler.
That sounds like frigging a cross between Popeye and a munchkin. I could just, I should do Tony. Let me do Tony Testosterone, who, uh, uh, who's, you know, known, otherwise known as Brian Slade. He's a white guy, a white guy, a power lifter, uh, um, and he has a voice like Mike Tyson. Hey, Dr. Bill, Dr. Bill, what's the next article?
There you go.
Yeah, man, I I take, I I I I need some more gimmick, some more steroids. Yeah.
Money can't buy happiness. But a study shows we can earn it.
Earn it?
Remember to watch that investment firm, Smith Barney?
Smith Barney?
We make money the old-fashioned way.
We steal it?
We, that's what they should have said.
No, that's that's Smith, that's Bernard Madoff, who made off with everybody's loot.
We earned it.
We earned it. I remember an old WWE episode where Paul Bearer and a young, and a much younger Undertaker. Bobby the Brain Heenan was doing color commentary and and at that time, uh, the Undertaker used the. The cremation urn to hit, hit the opponent over the head. Or it must have been Paul Bearer. And Bobby Heenan says they make money the old-fashioned way. They earn it. Get it?
Oh, my god.
The cremation urn over the head, they earn it. Okay, I don't know. He's just extremely naturally funny man, Bobby the Brain Heenan.
The study, which analyzed Gallup surveys of four hundred and fifty thousand Americans in two thousand eight and nine. Suggests that there were two forms of happiness. Day-to-day contentment and overall satisfaction with one's place in the world.
What about Hugh Hefner happiness?
While a higher income brings little day-to-day contentment, it does boost people's overall satisfaction. The study conducted by Princeton University economist Agis, Agis Deaton. And famed psychologist Daniel Kahneman. Found that there's a specific dollar number or income plateau. After which more money has no measurable effect on day-to-day contentment.
Isn't Mick Jagger involved in that study? I can't get no satisfaction.
As people earn more money, their day-to-day happiness rises. That is, until you hit the magic number, seventy-five thousand dollars a year. After that, it's just more stuff with no gain in happiness. That doesn't mean wealthy and unwealthy people, excuse me, wealthy and ultra-wealthy people are equally happy. More money does boost people's overall satisfaction all the way up the income ladder. People who earned a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, for instance, reported more overall satisfaction. Than people earning one hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, so on.
Well, they, no, they can, they have, they have better toys.
Giving people more income, seventy-five K, is not going to do much for their daily mood. But it is going to make them feel they have a better life.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Deaton told this associated press.
Having a very fruitful social life and or the right significant other will, should be able to boost that tremendously.
I don't think they've studied.
Getting, in other words, getting laid by somebody who.
Speaking of.
Really gets your hormones flowing, you get your juices going.
Speaking of that.
Getting laid?
Yeah.
Why did they call it laid? I mean, it's like, like you're laying an egg. Why, where did they?
If.
I gotta, I gotta research the word laid.
If a fireman can be fired, can a prostitute be laid off?
That's a good question. And and a prostitute with a runny nose is full. And I I know somebody that is in a tire business, putting tires on on trucks and cars. And I said to. What happens when you hang it up and you retire? Does that means, does that mean you'll be retiring from the tire business? There you go.
Funny, eh?
But yeah, getting back to the words, the funny words that are used. Um, there's so many funny slang words about copulation, about sexual intercourse. You know, laid, getting.
Coitus.
Getting stucked, whatever, what is it?
Coitus, laid.
Coitus?
Bang.
Coitus. What about oral sex? You got Philatio, Philipatio? You got Connie.
Was he from Philadelphia?
You got the Irish, uh, the the Irish Airlines Connie Lingus. Or that's Aer Lingus, I'm sorry. Connie, Connie Lingus. They're all funny words.
Uh, anyway.
Anyway, back to the.
As an economist.
Ecominus?
Economist.
Oh, economist.
I tend to think money is good for you.
Okay.
And and please to find some evidence for that. However. Seventy-five thousand dollars in New York doesn't buy as much as it would in, say, South Dakota. Based on cost of living index values from Kiplinger dot com. The happiness salary would vary widely across the nation. For example, New Yorkers would have to earn a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars a year.
High cost of living.
To achieve the seventy-five thousand dollar happiness level.
That's true.
In Chicago.
Because they rip you off living in the city, New York.
In Chicago.
Chicago, the windy city.
Eighty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty would be after me.
See, it shows you what a rip-off New York City is.
It took the least amount of money.
Unbelievable.
To achieve happiness in Fort Smith, Arkansas.
Sure.
And Pueblo, Colorado.
Same, the same thing applies probably Dallas, Houston, uh, Denver, Phoenix.
Where a sixty-two thousand dollar salary buys seventy-five thousand dollars worth of happiness.
Happenus?
Happenus.
That's what Hugh Hefner has, is experiencing with his new chickypoo. That he's getting married to, or maybe he married her already.
He's married her.
Twenty-six-year-old, Hugh Hefner is experiencing hap- penis, happiness, happiness, happiness. You gotta love it. Unrehearsed. Here at the Newsletter Censored.
Oh, my lord.
Research Center in northeast New Jersey. We, we don't come up with, we don't write this stuff ahead of time. This is right off the top of our head, man. This is unique. Uncensored, corporate and FCC-free, America's Town Hall Meeting of Truth. With a touch of comedy, but it's, it's all truth. We're not kidding with you, man. We're not kidding around. This is all fact.
Two, popular supplements used to treat joint pain don't work. And health authorities should stop paying for them, a new study says.
Sure.
European researchers analyzed the results of ten past trials. In three thousand eight hundred and three patients who took glucosamine, chondroitin.
Glucosamine.
Or a placebo.
Glucosamine sulfate, not glucosamine.
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 I don't want people to think it's the fish.
It's glucosamine.
Salmon?
Glucosamine.
Or Samini.
Glucosamine.
Glucosamine chondroitin sulfate.
To treat arthritis and in their hips and their knees.
Not arthritis, arthritis.
They found neither supplement taken either separately or together did any better.
Lies.
Than a placebo. Wait a second. Wait a second.
Pharmaceutical industry propa, ouch! I hate myself. Pharmaceutical industry propaganda.
Yes, it is. However, it has been proven.
Yeah.
It has been proven that antidepressants and et cetera. Do not do as well as placebo.
Well, the the human mind is, when tricked properly, is very powerful.
Obviously.
It's like, look at psychosomatic illnesses.
The question for this stuff is here, who paid for the study?
Ah ha.
That's what's important.
Because whoever paid for the study could say anything they want, right?
Right.
And can alter it.
They will get their results that they want. Exactly. The study was led by Peter Junie, head of the Institute of Social and Preventive Medicine in Switzerland. It was paid for by the Swiss National Science Foundation and was published Friday in the journal BMJ.
Yeah.
For the past decade, glucosamine and chondroitin have been recommended by doctors to treat arthritis in the hip and the knee. The supplements are components of human connective tissues found in cartilage and bone.
By the way, cartilage from animals like bovine cartilage, uh, chicken collagen, things of that. Also, very, very good for arthritis, for osteoarthritis, not the rheumatoid, because that's autoimmune disease. Like, what is it? Uh, uh, yeah, chicken collagen, bovine cartilage.
But even along with, along with these two supplements, you should be taking highly ironic acid also, and a lot of water.
Absolutely, highly ironic acid. But the point is, are they taking the proper therapeutic dosages?
That too, yeah.
That's the magic question before they judge whether or not they work or not.
Chronic arthritis, there's probably hundreds of other studies that show that they do work.
It's all drug company propaganda.
Chronic arthritis in the hip or the knee can be treated, here we go, can be treated with drugs that reduce inflammation. Well, what the hell does that have to do with rebuilding the synovial fluid and et cetera? Absolutely nothing. But chondroitin and glucosamine, they do that, and highly ironic acid.
Right, collectively. MSN sulfur is a good anti-inflammatory. Taking in the proper therapeutic dosages, you jabronis out there. Not, 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 not just, uh, you know, what the bottle tells you, uh, if you happen to have severe osteoarthritis. But you have to be under the care of a complimentary, uh, medical nutritionist, holistic health practitioner. To determine the amount. Unless you gotta, you have a good book at home that tells you what to do. You know, like something from Julian Whittaker or Gary Noe or people like that.
Chronic arthritis in the hip or knee can be treated with drugs that reduce inflammation, but. Those can cause serious stomach and heart side effects. If they are used in the long term. And those are NSAIDs, by the way. That's what they're talking about.
Okay.
In the BMJ analysis, the researchers did not find any proof glucosamine or chondroitin were dangerous. Still, the researchers said because the supplements didn't reduce joint pain. Insurers and governments should stop buying them. Now we see. With a little bit of penetration, we see exactly what they were measuring.
I like that word, penetration.
They weren't measuring whether the joint was being repaired. They were only measuring for pain. And I have not.
Symptomatic.
I have not heard or seen in my studies where these two products. Glucosamine and chondroitin have anything to do with pain.
Curative.
They rebuild the joint.
Which is curative. And but this are, these people doing the study are interested in symptomatic, in symptoms.
Exactly, pain relief.
Pain relief.
Bullshit.
Yeah. Oh, by the way, a friend of mine sent me the, uh, some, uh, video trailers of the new porno movie. Uh, I think it's called Nailin' Palin', where they have this chick, uh, with the hair up and the glasses. That facially looks just like Sarah Palin. She looks pretty good. I mean, look, I I don't take anything away from her. For her age, she's a very attractive woman. I saw, uh, a video of her when she won, what is it, Miss Alaska? When she was a young chickypoo. Very hot girl, very, very attractive. At that time, she had blonde hair.
But there's one place to nail.
And the other, the other jerk, the other conservative nut, Christine, uh. The slutty witch O'Donnell, O'Donnell, very attractive girl, uh, very, very bangable. Very porkable, or whatever term you wanna use. But they, mentally, we, we just wouldn't get along with them at all.
There's one place.
They deserve the eagle beak. Yeah.
There's one place to nail. There's one place to nail Palin.
In the ass?
In the mouth.
To keep her mouth shut, so she wouldn't, she wouldn't sound like a political moron like she's going to when she runs in two thousand and twelve and twenty-twelve. That's if we have a civilization left in twenty-twelve.
A Massachusetts company wants to market a genetically engineered version of Atlantic salmon, and regulators are weighing the request. If approval is given, it would be the first time the government allowed such modified animals to join the foods that go onto the nation's dinner tables.
No good. If it's farm-raised Atlantic salmon, stay away from it. Just get the wild cordalaskan.
Food and Drug Administration-
Oh, they suck.
-districts have largely agreed with him, but they have not yet decided whether to approve their request. Critics call the modified salmon a frankenfish-
It is.
...that could cause allergies in humans and the eventual decimation of the wild salmon population.
Also, farm-raised aquacultured fish have more pollutants in the water towards the, especially towards the bottom.
And they feed them grain.
They get-
What the hell fish do you know that eats grain?
When, wait a minute, wait a minute, since when are salmon vegetarians? Are salmon carp? Are salmon goldfish? Are salmon koi?
Since when do our cows eat shit?
Are salmon-
Chicken shit. That's what they put into their food.
Oh, man. Oh, isn't that similar to the greedy bastards that created mad cow disease? In England, remember? Mad cow disease? That perforates the brain with holes, feeding the cattle, the carcasses, the dead meat of diseased and aged cattle, so they don't have to spend money on proper feed, okay? Or what goes on with the tainted food of mainland China that they ship out, the chickens, you know, processing dead diseased chickens and selling it, you know, internationally, exporting it. Green, bottom line, further contributing to the demise of the human race.
An FDA advisory committee is reviewing the science of the genetically engineered fish this week and hearing such criticisms as the agency ponders approval. Genetic engineering is already widely used for crops, but until now, the government has not considered allowing the consumption of modified animals, although the potential benefits and profits are huge. I wonder what the benefits are.
Yeah, what are the benefits?
Where are the benefits? I know one benefit they always pull out of the hat. Oh, we can feed the hungry in the world.
You know, it's funny you mention that.
If the hungry in the world don't have the scleroderma to pay for the food, they ain't gonna get fed.
Every time I see a public broadcasting station documentary about agriculture, whether it be nationally or internationally, the advertisement is always coming from a government source or most likely, most likely, someone Santa Corporation, where they're talking about all of the virtues, and I'm being sarcastic, so-called virtues of genetically engineered foods. It's how talking about, we can now feed the world, we have created a rice for the poor countries of Southeast Asia, we have created a new rice that is rich in beta-carotene for vitamin A deficiencies in the third world and Asia, because we have mated, we have grafted or whatever, the rice plant with a particular flower, I don't, daffodil, that's it, a daffodil or something too. Now we have rice that is high in, instead of saying beta-carotene, which is what it really is, because it's a plant, they say vitamin A. Guess what, stupid asses? Diabetics, as well as cats, cannot convert beta-carotene into usable vitamin A. Is that true?
Well, they need preform vitamin A. I do myself.
Like retin- retinol palmitate.
We need the-
Dry vitamin A, retinol palmitate.
Real vitamin A.
Real vitamin A, and the D3, the powdered vitamin D, D3. Now it's up to eight hundred and a thousand internationally units a day for vitamin D, no more four hundred international units.
Some people are taking five thousand.
Five thousand international units for, that's a therapeutic dosage for a health problem.
Maybe, I don't know, I would say, I would say, that for the winter-
For the immune system.
In the northern climes, in the northern climes.
Yeah.
I would take one thousand to five thousand for that period.
One thousand to five thousand international units of vitamin D-
For that winter period.
For the winter period where your immune system is under a lot of stress.
Where you're not getting any delight.
What about A? Twenty-five thousand units?
Oh, well, I would try twenty-five, thirty-five thousand for months.
For months.
With vitamin A and then drop off a couple of months, and start over again.
Isn't it amazing how these vitamin companies are all scared and paranoid about giving, about putting out optimal vitamin A and D supplements? So, do you think it's the FDA that's putting pressure on them?
Of course.
The orthodoxy?
Of course. Look what happened in Europe.
Codex Alimentaries.
Right.
Taking away your right to maintain optimal health through prevention, through proper nutrition.
Make them more business for your doctor, because you're gonna have to go to your doctor to get a prescription.
Sounds like a removing, a removal of a God-given right right there, that your right to stay healthy so you're not victimized by the drug companies, and every time you want to refill your bottle, every time you want to refill your bottle of, let's say, vitamin C, you have to pay the medical doctor for a doctor's visit to get a prescription?
If you, the potency level will probably be low, like sixty milligrams of vitamin C.
Sixty?
You want more than that, you'll have to get a prescription from your doctor.
Yeah, they don't want you to be too healthy now, so they want to, they want to give you-
They don't want you to be healthy at all.
They want to give you the crappy bullshit RDA from the government.
Our health system in this country is a disease system, it's not a health system.
And that goes back to the article about glucosamine and chondroitin sulfate and arthritis. They are concerned with symptoms not curing. It is not a curative-minded society we have here in America. It is covering up, masking, excuse me, masking the symptoms.
Well, that makes more, you know, money for the doctors and the tests and all of that stuff, I mean, the healthcare system.
Healthcare system.
Yeah.
You want to do one more article before taking a break?
Let me finish this guy.
Before taking a break?
Genetic engineering is already widely used for crops. Now the government has not considered allowing the consumption of modified animals, although the potential benefits and profits are huge. Many people have qualms about manipulating the genetic code of other living creatures. If approved, the fish could be in grocery stores in two years. Genetically engineered animals are not clones, which the FDA has already said are safe to Clones are copies of an animal. With the genetically modified animals, the DNA has been altered to produce a desirable characteristic.
Uh-huh.
In the case of the salmon, Aqua Bounty has added a growth hormone-
Oh, man.
-from a schnook salmon-
Yeah, schnook.
-that allows the fish to produce its growth hormone all year long.
Similar to the growth hormones they give the recumbent and bovine growth hormones they give dairy cows.
Because the altered fish has never been eaten, critics say it could include dangerous allergens, especially because seafood is highly allergen. They also worry that the fish will escape and intermingle with the wild salmon, which is already endangered.
Due to mankind.
They would grow fast-
Greed.
-and consume more food-
Yeah.
-to the detriment of the conventional wild salmon. The FDA said that the fish shouldn't cause any allergies, not found in conventional salmon, and there are a chance they could escape. You know what? They will escape.
They will escape.
Whenever you hear a governmental official say something like that, you know the opposite is gonna happen.
Murphy's Law?
Yeah. A wide range of environmental, food safety, and consumer groups have argued that more public studies are needed and that the current FDA process is inadequate. It allows the company to keep some proprietary information secret.
Secret.
It is outrageous to keep this vital information secret. Consumers have a right to know what FDA is trying to allow into our food supply.
Yeah. I'm telling you, people are really in the dark and they're really foolish to vote conservative. Actually, they're foolish to vote two-party system, they should be voting independent, but they don't really know the independent candidates that would buck the corporate plutocracy. But unfortunately, because of human nature, even if we had a revolution, just like what happened in other countries like Latin America, the group that replaces the evil corrupt political party will most likely be bought off by the corporate CEOs, the corporate plutocracy. So, the problem here is human nature, which means Reverend Bill, is it true our only hope is the second coming of Christ?
It seems that way.
Because human race, forget it. Now, before I do a little promo before our break, a gentleman on YouTube, Dr. Bill, had corrected me and said that there is definitely a difference between the free market and corporatism. Or is it, is it-
Well, the free market is the market, but corporatism is the rule of corporations.
Right.
Corporatism is fascism. Mussolini himself called it so. He said, "Why do you call it fascism? Why not call it what it is, corporatism?"
Corporatism. Now, that verse in the Bible that I emailed you about every man shall own his own land and his own fig tree, was that Maccah?
In the world tomorrow.
Oh, this-
I believe it's Isaiah.
Isaiah?
I believe so. Might be one of the minor prophets, but I think it's Isaiah.
Because it's mentioned in several places in the Bible about the man owning, mankind owning his own land and his own fig tree and his own vine?
In the millennium and in the world tomorrow, after the millennium, that is what God is gonna set up, his economics. Standards will never change. Every fifty years, if you sell your land, you will get it back. No man shall ever lose his land.
Everything shall have a standardized value.
Gold will be, you know, let's say thirty-five dollars an ounce, that's what it's gonna be forever.
So, this conservative, free-market capital-
There will be no ultra-rich and ultra-poor.
And there'll be no more buy-low and sell-high, like the conservative, greedy conservative bastards in this free-market capitalist country?
The laborer will be getting a fair wage for his labor.
Which means you will own your own work.
If you're working on your own land, but I'm saying, if, let's say, you sell your land.
Right, and you work for somebody.
And you work for somebody else, you will be getting a fair wage for your labor, yes.
This is the world tomorrow.
No more being able to take advantage of people like corporations do today.
And no more banks, credit card companies and banks charging astronomical interest to the poor?
Actually, most likely, credit will not be in the world tomorrow.
Won't be necessary.
You will save for what you need and want.
Because the-
And then you will buy it.
Because a percentage of the worlds, of the earth's natural resources will be yours, right?
Because the Bible says neither a borrower nor a lender be-
This is very unlike what conservative republicans preach, who claim to be closer to God than us so-called wicked secular, secular humanist liberals.
Yeah.
Interesting. I just want to do a little promo. This gentleman to the right of me, which is actually to your left, I know I say that every week. Anyway, this is a self-portrait of the Reverend Dr. William J. Isom, the Reverend Dr. William J. Isom is a fine watercolor artist. This is the William J. Isom collection, can be seen at NewsletterCensored.com, it can be seen on the William J. Isom Facebook profile, it can be seen at www.myspace.com/megalife21. Send him an email, ask if a particular painting is available, and if it is, it's available for sale. The bidding starts at five hundred dollars. This is one small example. And this is the foundation of our organization, Censored, founded by the Reverend Dr. William J. Isom in nineteen-seventy-seven. It discussed the five taboos of American life, politics, religion, health, human sexuality, and child-rearing. Okay, this is a new issue called The Hidden Enemy, and it also contains, well, in this issue, it has a very rare appearance of Health Talk by James P. Madonna, yours truly, but it contains The God Project by William J. Isom, Doctor of Divinity. It also contains Sexuality: A Holistic Approach by William J. Isom, Ph.D., and then, of course, the political monologue, the political teaching of William J. Isom, Ph.D., in the front. This is it. The best way to be a part of our organization is to get your free annual subscription with your gift to support this work by going to www.newslettercensored.com, okay, which is our primary flagship homepage, okay? And of course, our internet talk radio station is looking better than ever. We keep on improving the appearance of it, so check it out. The link to that station is at the top of NewsletterCensored.com. So, we're gonna take a little break.
And please view that page, that website with IE, please.
Yes, if you-
Mozilla Firefox does not seem to render it properly.
For some reason, the text is not rendered properly with Mozilla Firefox, so look, view it, most likely you have a Windows operating system, look at it from Internet Explorer, even though I despise Microsoft with a passion.
Aye, aye.
And I love Linux.
I hate Bill Gates.
I despise Bill Gates with a passion. I love people like Steve Jobs, too bad the poor man is very sick, but of Apple, and I love Linux, Ubuntu or Mint as an operating system, which, by the way, Mozilla Firefox works splendidly. So, I think it might be a clash between Windows and Mozilla, because why? Because maybe Microsoft wants to penalize you for not allowing Windows to control your entire computer, your entire PC. It's like corporate plutocracy. They want to control you, every little molecule of your life.